We'll call to be in order, have a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Rush County Schools Vision Statement is to achieve personal excellence through a wide range of educational challenges and opportunities. Mr. Superintendent, is there any public comment?
There's no public comment at this time per board policy.
Shall we go on, just tell me something good, Mrs. Mastin.
Good evening. It is my honor to recognize Mrs. Caitlin Salee as our Staff Member of the Month. Excuse me. Caitlin is a brand-new teacher to us. She is our special education teacher and her colleagues had lots of really wonderful things to say about her. I think my personal favorite is that she has a ray of sunshine and that is most definitely true. She always has a smile on her face. She's always friendly and kind to everyone she speaks to. She's very supportive of all of our teachers and students. She works really hard at scheduling, which is the bane of the existence to a new special education teacher especially, but she's always willing to think outside the box and figure out something that works so that all of our students have what they need. She's always friendly, she's very helpful, she's not afraid to ask questions and I appreciate that. She also takes advice and the things that she gets when she asks those questions and puts them into action almost immediately. She also goes above and beyond, not just for our special education students, but for all of the students in our building to work to make all of them successful. I definitely appreciate her and I'm so glad that she's a part of Arlington Elementary.
Our Arlington Student of the Month is Molly Weir. And if that name sounds familiar, it's because last month, her older sister Sabrina was our student. So Tim, you and I have been something right, but you don't have any more kids left at Arlington, so three Pete is out of the question next week. Molly has a lot of wonderful things to be said about her. Her teacher said Molly's kind and courteous to every student, always ready to assist anyone at Arlington. She's a very responsible student who actively participates in her studies and performs exceptionally well in her academics. And I'll add just a couple more things. She is rarely seen without that smile on her face walking around the halls, unless, what I've seen, she is very deep in thought. Then sometimes she gets a serious look. And as a basketball coach, I want to add this. She is a lockdown defender on the court. She is running around that court, staying with her girl the entire time, and she still does it with a smile on her face. So congratulations to Molly Weir.
Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, we'll start out with our Staff Member of the Month, Mrs. Duran. She loves this, by the way. I told her that her speech didn't have to be that long. So anyway, Mrs. Duran is our school nurse and she's very quiet, so a lot of you, if you don't know her, she is very quiet. However, we see other sides of her as well. She's someone that just really goes above and beyond for all of her students. And she not only fulfills her responsibilities as a nurse, but she's willing to help in any other way at the office. One of her colleagues said this about her. Mrs. Duran is the fixer of boo-boos, the confidant during the hard times, and the comic relief at appropriate times too. Whether it be an ice pack for a bumped knee, for gym class, a peppermint for an upset stomach, or a coveted little tooth box for those who lost teeth that you have, she's always ready for whatever to date those of her. Mrs. Duran treats all the students with respect. She meets their needs like they are her own children. So congratulations, Mrs. Duran, we appreciate you. Our Student of the Month is Connor Scholter. I'll have Connor. So Connor here, he is, he does his personal best every day, don't he? He does. He works hard in all areas of the curriculum, but he especially loves math. Don't you like math? He, he's also very respectful and he's a friend to all of his classmates. He helps them if they need assistance and he's always willing to include others in small groups or play activities. And one of Connor's teachers said Connor's a model student. You know what that means? That means that everybody wants to be like you because you're a model student, just like you should be. So she also said that I can always count on Connor to be truthful and he can be trusted to do the right thing. And one of his greatest qualities is that he's very motivated with our math and our reading path assignments in I-Ready. And he uses his free time that he has to work towards his goals. And he surpassed them by leaps and bounds, haven't you? He doesn't waste time and every time I go to his classroom, he's always on task and he's always working really hard. So I really can't wait to see all the great things that Connor's going to accomplish this year as a first grader and the rest of his education career. So congratulations Connor.
Dr. Jeff.
So we'll start with Lily Ann Cullen. She is a third grader in Mrs. Buzzer's class. And she is kind, helpful, and has a contagious smile. And her teacher says Lily Ann is a very hard-working student. She is one you can always count on to be doing the right thing and being respectful to everyone around her. She always walks in the room with a smile and a story. She greatly cares about others and is always willing to help. My classroom would not be the same without her. Keep up the positive attitude, Lily Ann. Sally Bossy is our primary Student of the Month. And she is a kindergartner in Mrs. Bossy's class. She is compassionate, thoughtful, and kind. And this is what Ms. Buzzer has to say about you. Sally is an awesome pick for this month's Student of the Month. Her sweet little personality and her precious smile will light up our kindergarten class. She is always willing to give a helpful hand to anyone who needs an extra friend. She generally cares for others and takes an interest in getting to know them. I am so very proud of this little free spirit. She is a great example and a role model for our class.
Ricky, you want to come on?
Come on up, Zachary.
You want Ricky to go first?
Sure.
Okay. I put Ricky on for you.
That's fine.
I, I am super, super excited to present the Employees of the Month at Rushville Elementary. These are two individuals that I have great admiration for. This is Rick. Rick and I have had some really, really cool conversations and he loves R.E.S. and he loves our kids. And as a custodian, he works his tail off for our kids each day. And Rick and I have had some great conversations about family. He loves his grandbaby to death. We've talked life, we've talked 70's music. He likes to give me a hard time. He's an IU guy, which I don't appreciate. Didn't know people cared about IU football this much. This is new. This is new thing. Purdue basketball starts tonight, everybody, so. But he, he spent his fall break painting our wall outside of our office as well and it looks fantastic. Mr. Jameson said whoever painted that, just keep on painting. And I, I cannot say enough great things about Rick and just the connection that him and I have made in such a short amount of time. So as one of our Employees of the Month, Rick Cummings. Ann Zachary. I thank her all the time for coming back to R.E.S. And she loves this community dearly and she has been very, very good to me. Very good to me. I can think of the first day of school and it was a great day. We had transportations at the end of the day and Ann walked into my office and she pumped me up. And she said some things that I don't think I'll ever forget and it meant the world to me. She put confidence in me. It's not about me, this is not about me, but my goodness. She put her, she just, she just reiterated her confidence in me. She has, she planned our trunk-or-treats and she has helped plan our Veterans Day program and our Christmas program coming up. And I cannot thank Ann Zachary enough for choosing to come back to R.E.S. So our other Employee of the Month goes to Ann Zachary.
Miss Johnson.
I'm going to start with our Student of the Month. Hope, you want to come on up? Speaking of Purdue. Hope is a Purdue fan and my daughter goes to IU, so we have to give each other a hard time and, and she's willing to take my jabs, but she's definitely willing to give them back. I have enjoyed that interaction with her. Just want to start by reading some things that teachers said about Hope. She will always keep a positive attitude and outlook. She's funny and always helps in class. Hope never has any missing assignments and is kind, funny, and a loving person. Hope has a great sense of humor and uses it to raise people up. She is a leader both socially and academically for those around her. And I don't see her in a classroom as much as the, as the teachers do obviously, but at lunch, she is one at that lunch table. She has a great group of friends and she's definitely one to keep everybody smiling. And I think that she is definitely a leader, a positive influence on our school. So I want to say congratulations to Hope and it's a pleasure to be in the same school as you. Thank you. Now the Staff Member of the Month is Susan Hill.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Other staff members talked about Susan being a ball of joy from the section. She walks in the door until she walks out. She's always there to lend a hand and is eager to help others even with after-school activities. Susan adores, is adored by her students and the staff alike. She truly makes BRMS a brighter place with her presence. Susan is a team player. She's willing to do whatever's asked of her and never complains. Susan is able to be flexible at moments noticed and willing to come in early, help out with bus routes and whatever is needed. Susan cares deeply for the students. And that's what I've noticed about Susan is she truly cares about the kids at the middle school and she really wants them not only academically, but socially, but in their personal lives to excel. And that is obvious in her interactions with, with our students. And middle school students, they don't care about you unless you, they know how much you care about them. And she shows that every day. And it's a pleasure to have her in our school and I really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much.
We are going to start with Student of the Month and this month's Student of the Month is Jenna Waller. And I want to read one of her FFA advisors, Ms. Delay nominated Jenna, and I just, I want to read what Ms. Delay has to say. Jenna leads with grace and has exhibited resilience through many challenges this year. When I think of a servant leader, Jenna comes to mind. She serves as our Rushville FFA chapter president and also serves as the District Nine FFA president. She recently won the national title, national, mind you, number one in the nation. Okay. For extemporaneous public speaking. And what that is, you draw a topic, you have 30 minutes to prepare. Tell me if this is wrong. 30 minutes to prepare, you have to give a four to six-minute speech and then answer five minutes of questions about that topic which you just researched. And she did that three times and was the national champion. Am I correct? She also was sixth in agri-science food systems. Yep, correct? Okay. Awesome. Okay. Which is an incredible accomplishment that I believe deserves to be abundantly celebrated. Many do not get a glimpse at the countless hours of preparation and hard work Jenna pours into her contests and leadership roles. With all the titles and accomplishments Jenna has under her belt, she remains humble and kind always. She is not afraid to take members under her wing and show them the way. I know it's not easy to have two brand-new ag teachers and FFA advisors, but she always has the chapter's best interest in mind and has made Ms. Jaeger and I, Ms. Delay, feel welcomed and supported in our new roles. We are so proud of Jenna for jumping at every opportunity and always asking, how can I help? Jenna exhibits passion, understanding, and a tremendous amount of grit, which are all qualities that I believe should be considered for this award. And one of her other teachers says Jenna is wise beyond her years. She is passionate about everything she does and has a heart of gold. No matter where she goes in the future, she will be successful. And we completely agree. One more round of applause.
Okay. I'm not going to talk about my allegiance to IU or Purdue. I got one that graduated from Boo and one that graduated from IU, so I didn't go to either. So, but, to each their own. It would be probably strange if we didn't do something a little unorthodox from the high school, but I like to watch people who are behind the scenes that do things to help us all accomplish what we need to accomplish. So Anthony Meek, will you come up here, please? Many of you know this is Dr. Anthony Meek, our strength conditioning teacher. He is here tonight because he thinks he's receiving the Staff Member of the Month, but he is not. Okay? He's not getting it. He knows this. Because our Staff Member of the Month is Elizabeth Meek. Yes, he must get on it. He must get on it. I mean, I had so many people, this has been in the works for weeks and I don't know how we pulled it off, but somehow we did. But Liz had no idea tonight that she was going to be named the Staff Member of the Month. Matter of fact, when I told her that Anthony was getting it, she almost cried. And I'm not sure if that was good or bad, but, but she did. So I had to scour through the staff email and make sure I deleted everything of her name on there before I sent this stuff out. And then Colin says, did you make sure Flath wasn't on there? Oh my gosh. But it wasn't. We were good. She didn't get any of that. So we managed to get some word out to our staff and some, some great things were said. Matter of fact, five pages worth of stuff received back about Liz. Now, I just want to say something, here, I can get rid of this now, Anthony Meek. I want to say just a couple things about Liz myself, but two summers ago, we, we held our interviews for assistant principals and this little old 30-year-old walked in, just thought she was going to do an interview and at the end, when she walked out, first of all, I knew immediately, this, this, this girl's special. She's special. She's, there's something about her. And I think the entire committee, correct me if I'm wrong, said, she's hired. I mean, as soon as she walked out. It was, it was amazing of what she was able to do. And anybody that has worked with Liz knows that there's just something about her. She's got that it factor. There's just something there. We don't know what that it is, but she's got it. And I, I came in wanting to build a culture of family and different things and people that are happy to be at work and do these things. And a true leader does not motivate. This is something I've, I've lived by. A true leader creates an environment where others motivate themselves. And that's what we've tried to do is build that culture. That's what Liz does every day. She creates that environment for others to be able to motivate themselves if it's not for her energy, her positive attitude, her, her, her organization, her ability to, to talk with kids and staff. I'm sorry if I'm going on and on, but this has been weeks in the works. So anyway, she makes me look good every day. We have the same philosophies. We have the same vision. She's just got more brains. But they always say hire, hire people smarter than you, right? And let them work. And that's exactly what I did. So Liz, I want to say personally, thank you for everything, every day, and you're very deserving of this. I want to read just a couple comments that some of her, some of the teachers said, and I know there's a lot here. This coming from Tony Schultz. Liz, thank you for your stellar leadership, authenticity, organization, communication, and listening skills. You are a kind and caring professional with contagious enthusiasm and energy. Thank you for all you do. Since Sammy's here, then I'll read what you wrote, Sammy, okay? All right. No matter what Liz is going through or what is on her plate, she never fails to greet me with a smile on her face. Moving to a new place and being a first-year teacher is hard. Liz makes it feel a little easier. She helps me whenever I need it and always gets things accomplished quickly. Liz leads with a servant heart and never asks for the recognition for the work she puts in behind the scenes. I am so thankful for Liz and how she has poured into me to make me feel welcomed and supported. Liz deserves to be celebrated immensely and is so deserving of this recognition. Whenever the days feel difficult, please always remember how lucky we feel to have you in the position you are in. She has played a huge role in making RCHS feel like a home to me and I am forever grateful for that. Congratulations, Liz. The last one I want to read is from Dr. Anthony Meek. Dr. Meek says, it is no secret that education is a largely thankless job. This only becomes more apparent when the majority of your work is done behind the scenes rather than in front of the students. I have the unique perspective of seeing the amount of concern Liz pours into everything she does in her role at RCHS. She has strived to improve everything, everything she has been a part of since she was employed here, not only for our students, but for our teachers as well. The time and care I have seen her put into her responsibilities is absolutely deserving of praise and I cannot think of anyone more deserving of recognition than her. Thank you for all you have done and continue to do for our school and our community. I'm incredibly proud of you. Anthony Meek. Now, Colin wants to say just a couple things. I'm sorry, we're taking up time, I know.
Sorry, Warren's always great to follow. I just have a few things to say about Liz. One thing, she puts up with an awful lot because her office is sandwiched between Warren and I. And so she takes care of us, I can tell you that. Like Warren said, she, she makes us look, look good all the time. She's got a unique sense of humor, which I love. She makes even, you know, there's hard days in education and they can be rough, but you know, she's always got a positive energy. She's always got something to laugh about. She's always got, you know, a unique perspective, which, which I love. And I can tell you that the one thing that I like most about her professionally is that she pushes me to be better every day. Some of the things she does is absolutely amazing. I know we'll be in Warren's office in a meeting talking about something and I walk back to my office and there's already a spreadsheet created. It's like, it's unbelievable, the way she's able to organize things and, and just to watch her work. And definitely she does a lot behind the scenes, but, but we get to see that and not everybody does and it's, it's amazing. So I just want to read a couple more things from, from teachers and we'll wrap this up here. Liz is amazing. I don't even know how else to describe her. No one in our building has even the slightest idea how much Liz actually does behind the scenes, which does quite a bit because we're constantly seeing her work. She is one of the most thorough, diligent, charismatic leaders with whom I have ever worked and I look forward to continuing to learn from her. She's definitely a huge asset to our school and community. Next one here. This is a good one too. Liz is an amazing person. She is so very approachable and personable. She makes you feel like you can go to her for anything you need. She does so much in organizing events at the school and helps everything run smoothly. She's one of the best administrators I've ever had the privilege to work with. She also loves cats, so that makes her the best. Congratulations.
That's all we got. I should just all give it to you real slow.
I get the honor of introducing the Employee of the Month from the operations side of the district and I'd like to call Kevin Creek, please.
Kevin hates this. I don't know what ears are listening online, but I'm supposed to make him speak and I'm a man of my word. I'm not going to do that. Kevin is, I can't begin to describe how valuable he is because when I think of defining the word valuable, you think about if you have to replace somebody. And there's, uh, there's in the district I think of that are very difficult to replace, of course, but I think of Kevin in that sense, too, because he fixes everything. He fixes everything from, and I'm not, I'm on, I'm not gonna do it justice, but HVAC to the freezer in the kitchen is out, to the door is bent, to, "I need you to mount something in my office," to, "Hey, someone needs a jump, and their car's dead, or tire needs changed," or anything and everything. And every time that he's asked to go do it, he just goes and does it. Never complains, never asks for anything, and he's incredibly loyal to me, a, a guy that's pretty new to the district in my second year. And, um, he's an extension of our office here, the superintendent office, and he goes in a lot of buildings, and hears a lot of things, and hears a lot of stuff, and, um, he's very loyal to me, and that's, that's important to me as well. And loyalty is an important part of being a team, and, uh, I can't ask for more out of the maintenance if we even, what Kevin gives every day. So, Kevin, this doesn't do it justice, but congratulations.
Board member comments? Adam, I'll start with you in the middle first.
All right. Congratulations to all the recipients tonight. Great job, which I will observe. Also, the administrators and the building leaders who present this, really nice to see how heartfelt, you know, you've got to put a lot of thought into this, and you can tell that, um, it's really important to you. So, thank you for doing that. Congratulations to the FFA for a great national convention. I think we have a few American degree recipients. Jenna, great job. People don't understand what extemporaneous speaking is. It's one thing to win it in a district contest, that's hard enough, but there's very few people who accomplish what you did. So, congratulations, and thank you all.
I was also, because we had, what, four national finalists? Is there four top ten?
Michaela Phillips and Ashley Hubbard worked on a project together for AgriScience. Chance Keaton worked on AgriScience, and our dairy team made up of Maggie Winker, Kate Newman, Emma Trussler, and Jocelyn Kane. They ranked silver. So, Michaela and Ashley were tenth, Chance Keaton was ninth. Those are national finalists. And in the silver ranking, there's, there's national finalists, there's gold, silver, and then bronze. So, they were mid-pack, doing good, and they only had a month to prepare as well because of just the way things fell. So, really good for them to be able to pull that off.
And also, kudos to the, um, the new teachers. If you've never been up to Indianapolis during the national convention, you took how many students for how many days?
Sixty.
Sixty students.
Yep.
Mind you, they're all wearing the same blue backpack jacket as fifty thousand other kids that are walking all over, and it was so funny, because we went up and you'd see them, and they're trying to count their kids. I'm like, "How can you count kids?" You know, you'd see all these advisors, because they're all wearing Navy blue jackets, they're all dressed the exact same. And it was funny even watching the construction people across the one street. They were like videoing all of the kids in the blue jackets moving from one building to another, um, because it, it is something to see, to see that many kids, um, from all over the, um, United States that come to Indianapolis. A good friend of mine works security, and there was a kid there from, I can't remember where she said he was from, but like, he was crying in tears because he'd never seen fall leaves before. And, you know, the experiences they get to have and, and do as well, but, um, congratulations to them, and like I said, because one of the other parents said, "We need to buy those little trackers and put on every one of those kids, so they know where they're at, um, while they're up there." But congratulations to all of them on, um, a successful national convention.
Kevin?
You know, America is known as the land of opportunity, and I feel like Rush County Schools is the school district of opportunity. If you look at all the good things that our students have accomplished over the last month, it's just absolutely amazing. If you look at the, over the last two years, what our high school and middle school and the other schools have implemented, this new safety courses, uh, a variety of other courses to help better prepare our students to be successful, it, it, it's amazing. But the part that we fail to sometimes realize is that our kids at the high school level are only as good as what they're prepared at the elementary level. And so, it's the work at the, that they get, starting with the teachers at the elementary, that prepares them to be good students at the middle school and at high school. So, it's not just a high school thing, it's the entire district. And we have wonderful teachers who truly are working hard to prepare our students to be successful, uh, employees, as well as very good citizens as they graduate from high school.
Angie?
We talked about IU football. It's odd, you know, for an IU person to be able to cheer for football. We've always been a basketball school with a football problem, and we've kind of flip-flopped that. But as I'm cheering for IU football, I'm watching Rushville football do a very similar thing. They were winning games like crazy this year. It was really exciting. I was at a Bowling Green football game, and I looked at one of my daughters and I said, "Hey, Rushville beat LaPelle last night." Lady in front of me turned around and said, "I'm from Rushville." She was, her, she'd married a Bowling Green guy, so I mean, we're everywhere. So, it was kind of cool to see that, you know, we're, we're, we're doing good things with our football, and I'm proud of that as well, so, keep going.
Jeff?
Proud of the football team as well. I'm not sure I heard on the radio, our cross-country team did really, really well. Is that right? What did they do in finals?
Regional qualifier.
We had qualifier for regional for both.
I didn't know that.
Both boys and girls.
Both boys and girls. Congratulations to them, all the teachers, employees, for your award tonight, kids. Little Sally back there, she takes care of my cattle. Jenna, you're one of mine. So, congratulations, and to everybody else. And I think there was two national, uh, American farmer degrees or American degrees.
Kelby Roberts and Ashley. Kelby Roberts and Ashley Spade.
Yep. And I was supposed to go up, and it didn't make it, so, uh, but congratulations to everybody that's doing great things here. Really appreciate it. And Liz? You, too.
Everybody took almost everything I had to say. Anthony, your statement probably got you off the hook, okay? Good job, sir, good job. We're gonna take a break for five minutes for pictures, and also imagine where their board members, five minutes, and come back, and we'll start being, go, go from there.
I told me back to order. Mr. Superintendent consent items, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. We have one out of state and overnight, or two out of state and overnight field trips. The RCHS FFA to fire leadership conference in Trafalgar, Indiana. November fifteenth and returning on November seventeenth. Also the RCHS girls' basketball to Middlebury, Indiana. For the twenty twenty-four Bankers Classic departing December twenty-sixth and returning December twenty-eighth.
What's the fire leadership, just out of curiosity?
It is.
Hey Sammy.
It's called, fire stands for something and I don't remember what it stands for. But they go down and they just do leadership activities. They're put with other kids from typically the district. They all go like the same, like different districts go different areas.
Could you explain what fire leadership is to me, please?
What?
The fire leadership.
Oh, fire leadership conference?
Yes.
Um, it is a conference in Trafalgar at the Indiana FFA Leadership Center. That it's for juniors and seniors. And basically they spend a weekend there and develop leadership skills, agriculture knowledge. They get to meet a lot of new people, they get mixed up in groups. Yeah, great leadership opportunity for them.
What does fire stand for?
Oh.
It doesn't stand for planes, right?
Source seeking opportunities, achieving results. Fire is. I know the E is excellence.
You're up to the top, Pam.
I'll look into it, I gotta rush up on it, but yes.
Okay, just curious, I was just curious.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, the state officers put it on, they facilitate the whole thing. There's usually about hundred twenty to hundred seventy members that are there from around the state, so.
Super. Kind of like a student leadership.
Awesome.
All right, good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you guys.
I'm sorry, continue, continue also.
Sure.
Very blessed and pleased to receive nineteen donations this month. From a wide variety of groups, mostly for varsity scholars account. Really appreciate the community's support for our school corporation. So with that, I seek the board's approval of the October minutes, the personnel report, donations, claims, and payroll. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Resolution, transfer of funds from operations, education fund to operation fund, sir.
This is an annual resolution that gives me the superintendent the authority to instruct the treasurer of Rush County Schools to transfer up to three million dollars from the education fund to the operation funds to reimburse operations for fund expenditures that are not allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code twenty dash forty-five point five. For the period of January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So I am seeking the board's approval to adopt this resolution to transfer the amounts from the education fund to the operations fund only if needed. So move.
Second.
Have motion, second, discussion. We rarely go up to the max, we haven't, Jim.
We've never gone to the max, the most we've done is eight percent. So, and as we are fixing our facilities, we wanted to take less of that.
And I think what that means, we do that, we have more money to spend on teacher salaries, so that's kind of nice thing.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, call for the vote, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Surplus items for auction.
This is your grant. This is Mr. Peters.
So, I'll try to keep this brief because this really doesn't do it justice. But when I came to the board in May, I believe it was, or June. I had a list of items proposed we were going to auction off and get rid of, and those items still exist. At the time, we didn't have any buses for sale in our fleet. And I talked to the auctioneer, he didn't really feel like an auction would give us any traffic or anything for a buck. So I decided to pursue an online auction here locally. And after many attempts and just not working out, we're back to using the old fashioned auctioneer. Because now since the June board meeting, I have a couple of buses that may bring some additional traffic. So with the letter that you have there, and the additional items that are included, the buses with the VIN numbers. I'd like to ask the board's approval to move forward with the auction that we originally had scheduled in June. Auction those items that were approved, and then the additional items in the new letter that you have in your packet. The buses with the VIN numbers and some radios and other miscellaneous equipment and stuff that's long overdue that we need to liquidate. So, just a little bit of a journey, I'd like to give you the decision. It is November nineteenth, correct?
Yes, what the letter said.
All maintain a motion.
So moved.
So.
Have a motion, a second, discussion.
Is there any online, because we auction equipment online for everything. Is there a place to auction used buses? Because I know the last ones we sold, it was like we gave away.
So, one bus in particular, it's bus seventy-two, has the cargo on the bottom. It's one of those Max Force engines that I've been referencing multiple times. So, in a previous meeting you approved, or we've talked about the purchase of new buses. We had that vendor try to give us appraisal, what'd he give us for bus seventy-two in the trade, and he said, it's worth a thousand bucks. So, we have used that bus for some spare parts and some other items to help our current fleet. And I think that on auction, we can get more than a thousand bucks. So it's paid for itself a few times over. So the long answer for you is, I think the way we're going to buy is the best we can do right now. Because what's what happens is that the dealer's going to buy it from us for bare bones. And they may get a few more hundred bucks out of it when they post it, but I think it's just an ancient beast.
Didn't we try to do an online auction a few years ago with it?
We did it there.
And a bus after ten years of age, in the ten years, they have to be inspected two, twelve years.
Yeah, they have to be inspected two times a year, yeah.
So I guess the issue was a potential buyer.
Yeah, and the other piece too. We would be, we're very honest about the condition of the bus. Like bus seventy-two, you could get some use out of it. But, you know, the check engine might make them on, and we don't want to give another school a lemon. You know, that's not our intent, so. But the two buses that I have in front of you, they need to go. We've attempted to put our resources into it to fix them and save them, and it's, it's, it's a money hole. So, we're gonna move on. And that's not just my decision, I consulted with Stan and Jamie and all the experts, so.
What time is the auction on the nineteenth?
I have down nine AM, and that's through Minow Hershberger is our auction. He's, we met two or three weeks ago with some planning, and he's been steering the direction that goes. All is good, so we're gonna do some stuff.
We're gonna have it, you usually have it on.
Bus barn.
Inside, I see.
Yeah, yeah, we think we'll just have it inside the bus barn. If the weather's really nice, we can do it out in the parking lot, if we have. And he, through using him, he felt like it was more worthwhile to post it online and through Facebook, the actual auction event. And I made the decision not to post it in the paper. So, he kind of floated that to me, and I, we thought we'd get the same traffic and the same attention through our online outlets. But it's going to be a physical auction with him doing the yodeling or whatever you want to call it.
They merchandise it, gets some pretty expensive.
Yeah, so.
That's why I wanted to say, because people watching online, if they want to come.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, there's some cardio equipment, there's random tools, there's handheld radios, random bus parts. Camera hard drives, a little bit of furniture. So, just a mix and match, but.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Board policy updates, sir.
Yes, I seek the board's approval for the second reading of the updated board policies that were listed in your packet. I reviewed them this weekend, there were no suggestions by our school attorney, I haven't heard from anybody. We just got a few, clean up formatting, and if you approve them, we're gonna post it.
All entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion. Hearing now, I'll call for the vote, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Consider approval of ratification of teachers' contract for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
We have reached a tentative agreement, and the Rush County Federation of Teachers Union has ratified the contract. We held an open door public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, as pursuant to the Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-nine, six dash nineteen. I seek the board's approval to ratify the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five teachers collecting bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion, a second, discussion.
Wish it could be more, but it was pretty good.
Yeah, I think we made good steps, we're not there yet, but we made good steps.
It was a hundred percent of all of your money, right?
Over a hundred percent.
Over a hundred percent, yep. And the talks went very well between the teachers and us. It was very, I felt like it was a very collective mission. Lack of, I don't know what I'm saying, but we worked together very well.
And the information we, I thought went about with the chance, Jim did a nice job of presenting the board's packet that we offered. And there was some good discussion. And there were more than people, teachers there who wants to hear that, so I thought was awesome.
And did we get everybody caught up?
We still have about four or five that we need to, they were just so far out of alignment, so. But we, we did fifty-one, we got fifty-one teachers caught up. So we are very, we're right there, we just, next year we'll get a little bit more.
Any other discussion?
I think a hundred percent of the teachers voted yes.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
It was unanimous.
And it was, I mean, the attendance was much better than what, or the number of staff that voted was much higher than what it.
Yeah, we had sixty-two, I believe, it was sixty-two or forty-two, maybe it was forty-two. That were in attendance, that were only people that can vote are members of the union.
So it was over double what it normally is.
Anything else? Call for the vote, all the speakers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries.
Does Adam need to abstain? Yeah.
Abstain.
Did I abstain?
No. You don't have to, you're not.
You don't have to.
Not living in the house.
Then I guess I should abstain.
She does live in the house.
Let's do this all over again, okay?
Is your certified?
All the speakers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, abstentions.
Aye.
We have three abstentions, four over with three abstentions. There we go. ADM count day information.
All right, in your packet, you should have a spreadsheet that has numbers on this year's ADM count. And I went ahead at the bottom and included dates from past years. Do you all have that?
Was it in our, our packet, email packet?
It was email, yes.
Copy that, okay.
All right, so our count came out at fifteenth, eighteen fifteen. Last fall, we had eighteen thirty in seats. So October first was the official count day. But there's a lot more that goes into the ADM count on October first than just the count of our students. We also were having to submit staff, and how many staff are non-certified versus the certified staff. That goes in on the October count. Multilingual learners were counted, and we had to make sure that our ESL teacher had administered the LITA test and their new scores were in, because you do get additional money for your multilingual learners. We also had to do graduation count for the summer graduates that we've had, and that was included. There was a curricular materials report that went in to the state. We used to, and when we charged for, for book rental, you as a parent would get a list of all of the books that you would take in from a class, and you would pay that bill. Well, since the state is no longer allowing that, excuse me. They give us a per student cost, which doesn't cover books in any corporation in the state of Indiana. So the DOE asked us to fill out a survey, so we went back to the old fashioned on our end textbook rental lists. And then that was submitted in a different form to share with our legislators to show that really they're not covering the cost of what it's costing us as a corporation to provide the different classes to the students. That was included as well. There's a difference between pupil enrollment and membership. So we have about fifty-seven preschoolers that show up in our SIS, but we don't collect money for those preschoolers unless they might have an IEP. And we're getting ready for December special account. Mr. Anderson has been helping and working with Brevin and I on that, we're trying to get ahead of things. This summer, for the July first count, I helped just this much with Brevin. We had seventy-five hundred, seventy-five, thirty-five hundred errors. Thirty-five hundred errors. So if a student throws an error, we can't count them, and we don't get funding for them. This summer, we had what were called like batch errors. So if you would make one correction, it would sometimes solve a hundred or two hundred errors. This fall, we didn't have any batch errors. And between Brevin and I, I think we accessed somewhere between five and maybe six hundred errors that were in student accounts, you have to go into each account and see where that error might be. There's sometimes very silly little clerical errors. It can be the address is wrong, or the date of birth is wrong. Believe they're not parents when they enroll their kids, sometimes forget when their birthday is. So at the state level, they have all of this information, and it has to match what's in our student SIS system. So it's pretty tedious, and we're trying to get out ahead of it. And like I said, we are already working on our December first count, which is for special and Emily. And also started working on our July count to make sure that we won't have thirty-five hundred errors. One of the things we're doing is we're meeting with our secretaries on a monthly basis to remind them and help them look at some of those real easy corrections that they can make and apply. And then if there's an error that they incur that they can't, then they bring it to Brevin or I, and we contact the DOE and ask for help. And sometimes they're not even able to give us answers for, for why there's an error. So, but our overall count was eighteen fifteen, and it really isn't that far down if you look at the trends. So do you have any questions about that?
Doc Secret, I'd like to interject a couple of things. One, hats off to Mrs. Ennis and Mr. Runnebaum, and even Mr. Anderson for what they're doing with accounts. It is imperative, and it is very tedious. And I call it the secret sauce. Once you get the secret sauce, the recipe, everything runs a lot smoother. And kudos to them saying, hey, can we pull the secretaries in once a month and do some PD? These poor people have been putting in information, and it was wrong, not to their knowledge, not that they knew they were doing anything wrong. And the response from the secretaries has been outstanding, thank you for this. Now we understand, we understand the why, why we're doing the things we do, why we, I mean, you have to put an address in correctly, if not, it throws an error. Well, then somebody on the back end has to go and clean it up. So they've done a lot of work this summer and in this fall, and hats off to them to get this stuff cleaned up. And then also teaching more than just one person how to put the information in. So hopefully now we won't have those big batch errors and stuff. So I applaud them for their leadership and working with the secretaries, making them feel a part of this process. Taking some ownership right there on the front lines for us. And also just, it's the latest trend, and I'm going to tell you, here it comes. We're seeing it in other school corporations around us because of the absenteeism and the letters and prosecutors. When parents are getting pushed, guess what they're doing?
Homeschool.
Homeschool.
Online.
The other corporations have lost sixty to eighty kids. Right before, we lost five right before account day because they were approaching that attendance threshold and being turned into the prosecutor. So it's something we're monitoring, we're looking at. I mean, you had those five kids withdrew, what, three days before account day? So, but it's a trend. And a lot of great information for our legislature, since this is a budget year with textbooks and the attendance is a big thing now. So just appreciate everything she's done with getting ADM straightened up for us.
So, about how much difference did we see in what the state reimbursed us and what it cost us for textbooks and all that?
Oh, it's, you get about a hundred and fifty dollars a kid. And we spent thirty-five thousand dollars in textbook stuff, so we're not even close. And that's what they wanted to see. We were blessed that we had a healthy cash balance in our textbook fund to absorb some of these costs. There are other school corporations that are upside down and have asked for an extension from the state so they can still get the textbooks, but they're hurting for money. And that is one, that is one of many major legislating pieces that with this budget, two-year budget cycles getting ready to hit. Of how to fund. It was a great thing, it sounded good, parents didn't have to pay textbooks, but they didn't fund it properly, so.
Shocked.
Hey, tell us what.
They tell us what, um, reading series or math series we can choose from, they usually give us four or five. We can't adopt if it's not on that list. And one of the things that, um, we've invested in is the Project Lead the Way from the elementary to a high school level. And it's an amazing, um, program and curriculum that's STEM and STEAM related, but it's not cheap either. And so we're trying to supplement with grants, working with Project Lead the Way, uh, company and letting, that, they let us know what grants are available and then we apply as much as possible to help supplement and keep that going and give our kids that opportunity for a, a solid curriculum.
Who decides the list?
The state.
Uh, donors, educators, my own. Textbook company.
The textbook company is one and nine. Um, D O E, we had, and and it was kinda crazy because with science of reading, we were told we had to at an elementary level adopt a, um, one of four and a lot of the companies hadn't had a chance to get their, um, petitions in or even their sales pitches. And we were using Fontes and Penella in our elementary level and hadn't used our five years up with them. But they aren't on the state-approved list for us to be able to be in compliance for science of reading, that's why we adopted the open court. So this, this year, there's an overlap on what we're being charged at an elementary level because they mandated that we use it, we didn't have a choice. Keeping my comments inside.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There's no motion either?
No, just information for the board.
Mr. Speaker, ten, other?
Um, just, I gave you a copy of, we had fifty-six teachers respond to the survey about parent-teacher conferences. Um, wanted you to take a look at that, uh, also printed out the comments. Very well, uh, received, obviously, you know, it's the first year of us doing it in one day. We could always continue to get better, we're doing that as, uh, we're working on next year's calendar. Uh, we'll have that for you to vote on in the December meeting. Uh, but very overwhelming, looks like the teachers really liked the one day. I know from an elementary standpoint, they really liked it, um, but it's still hard to prepare. Um, but very positive comments and and even the ones that were suggestions we're gonna take a serious look at as we're building the calendar for next year. Just, uh, some reading for you there. Also, uh, got, uh, printout of some budget numbers that you had asked for, hopefully that fits what you're needing. Um, we did make a transfer, um, into the, from the education to the operations, but as of right now, we are on target. Uh, we have spent five point nine out of operations of the six point four, uh, million dollar budget. Uh, we will end this, in the calendar year, we're on pace, um, which is what we want, December thirty-first. So, um, you have the electric, gas, the city of Rushville utilities, um, there for you to take a look at. Obviously, any questions or anything you can get with me, we'll discuss. Those are the only two things I had under other.
Important dates.
Yes, November twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, Thanksgiving vacation. December third is our regular school board meeting here at Central Office and that is an earlier start time at five thirty PM. December twentieth is the last student day for first semester. December twenty-third through January sixth is the Christmas break. Teacher workday is January sixth and January seventh, students return per second semester and our regular school board meeting here at Central Office at six thirty PM.
Mr. Peters?
All right, operations report, uh, just wanna reiterate that I'm excited about Alexa, well, born joining our team. Uh, she was approved last month and, um, she's been a great fit, she's soaked it up like a sponge and she's learning the complicated aspects of transportation. I tell you, if you, if you've never worked in it, it's, it's something else, it's something else, it just doesn't let up. But happy to have her aboard and want to set up publicly. I'd also thank, uh, thank Rhonda for her support as well. Use this opportunity for a friendly reminder, inclement weather is coming, um, the public is watching, make sure you listen to the phone calls for school cancellations, delays. Um, we try to have that information out, uh, the night before if we can, and if we can't, we make the decision by five in the morning. Five-ten, five-twelve.
Yep.
Um, we're out on the roads whenever we feel like we need to be and, um, safety is, um, a priority for us, so. Uh, there, there's the robo-call that goes out and also, uh, families can subscribe to text messages, app notifications, the Rush County Schools app and then also our Facebook page for updates on that, so we try to do our best and everybody's safe and keeping our kids in school. Uh, custodian, custodian-wise, we keep moving, I've got a couple openings now, uh, we've got some others and moving on, moving on to other opportunities. Um, if you know somebody, uh, the jobs are posted, uh, please get those applicants in because we're gonna interview and select people quickly. Um, and those are important hires behind the scenes. And then lastly, from operations, uh, you know, we highlighted Kevin Krieger tonight for his, for his work and, uh, whenever we can, we try to keep the work in-house and and our guys do a great job of keeping everything, everything fixed. You know, Dan now coordinates the maintenance and the custodial site, so he's taking on a little bit more and our guys turn the wrenches and get the things fixed, so. Um, I've listed some, some projects here, and H V A C just doesn't ever let up, whether it's regular maintenance or filters or some of those units that, uh, just can't keep up, the, the weather recently has been, uh, helpful, uh, but it's about to get cold. You know, we had hot air blowing in here earlier today, so we had to dial back and get the air conditioning on again a little bit, so the, the, the qual- air quality was good. Um, and we had a little bit, when the tropical storms came through, we had a little bit of just minor wind damage with wind, wind screens, which we haven't got fixed yet, but doors and other things that just keep the maintenance and keep the things fixed, so, um, overall, our guys go at it really hard every day. So, we're all, things are good.
Any other questions, sir? Grant. Mr. Anderson?
And well, Julie discussed our December one count we're working on, but, uh, also, we are working on some behavioral grant that was released by the State Department of Education for special education. So we are meeting tomorrow to look at that and to come up with some ideas. And it has to be used for students that have I E Ps, but we're looking at it as we can do training for not only our special education teachers, but general ed also because we have a lot of students out there in classrooms and we want those gen ed teachers to have what they need, be successful with them. So we'll be meeting on that, that's due in December, but, uh, we're moving right along, thanks.
Mrs. Ennis?
Um, well, again, the ADM for the state reports, um, we have submitted, um, over two hundred thousand dollars of grants or wishes for Project Lead the Way from elementary, middle school and high school. Um, we, it'll be a while, a couple months before we hear, um, if we've been awarded those, but their grants are available for us to buy, um, materials. In the past, the grants that we've received from Project Lead the Way were, um, just for training. So, um, fingers crossed, um, they were special grants just available to the state of Indiana. Um, we've received our Title One money finally, still don't have special ed money and we're running about five months, four months behind. Um, there are a lot of corporations that are running in the red right now, um, with their special ed account, but we are not. Um, also wrapping up several end-of-the-year reports for, um, Title Two and Title Four, uh, Title Three, trying to get those in, um, early. And, uh, been working with, um, Mr. Peters and Mr. Jamison, um, with the intent and to apply for a COPS grant, which is a federal grant for safety, so we're working on that as well.
Hi, Penelly?
Um, lately, I've been, um, working with teachers on getting their pacing guides aligned with the new reading curriculum that we purchased, open court. This week specifically, I'm meeting with all the elementary teachers, um, in-person P L C sessions at my office in Arlington to make sure that, um, it not only aligns with our new reading curriculum, but also the new twenty twenty-three standards, so that's what we've been working on the last couple of weeks.
Mr. Runnebaum?
Fiber's done, um, between all the major buildings here in town, we wrapped that up over fall break. Yes, thank goodness. We are no longer what we call bottlenecked or congested internally. Um, so as we move forward, the last step is replacing our main router in the server room. And then come July first, we'll be turning our internet speeds up from two gig to ten gig. So we are gonna see a very, very, very significant improvement. Uh, it, it's not just a simple, it's hooking the fiber in, we've had to unclog all of our network cabinets internally, opening those up from one gig to ten gig connections. So that way they see a better, better performance in their building, better performance on campus and pretty much just all the way around unclogging things and beefing things up. As we've done that, some of our old networking equipment has been screaming at us and we've had some phone trouble off and on for about two or three weeks. Today, that improved quite a bit, uh, we've still got some work to do on that front, uh, but we're getting that narrowed down and taken care of. Uh, we're eligible for a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars from the state, um, as an advancement and we're looking to put that towards classroom technology. We're looking at smart boards to place in classrooms and also a third-party wireless solution, which we're meeting with the vendors this week at our annual HEC conference. So myself, the techs, and Julie Ennis will be going to our annual HEC conference in downtown Indianapolis. It's the once-a-year tech conference we go to, it's two days. We meet with our vendors nationwide that we deal with on a yearly basis and that's really the only time we get to see them. So they're taking us to a Pacers game Wednesday, which is awfully nice and, uh, because they're trying to sell us stuff, but.
Dagg it.
Dagg it, yeah, and, uh, trying to make things better for our teachers, so we just keep plugging along, plugging along, but things are looking up, so. And when I look at the state of our fleet now, we're replacing all the secretary's computers, so this is officially halfway, if not over halfway, to the total device replacement like we've been wanting to do for so long. So we've got seven through twelve teachers next year, we're just gonna keep going.
Are they gonna have you in a suite?
Yes, they are.
Do they realize you're coming?
Yes, they do. And they've never heard of me.
Because they're gonna stay in the area, he's not driving home. As we have to double their appropriation that night.
Zach, Zach, leave babysitting, don't worry. But, yeah, that's it for us.
As far as the technology, like I said, we turned it from two to ten. Um, just look at it as when you get a new phone, you get an upgrade, but you, the charger you've had to plug your phone in to charge it, that work? Well, that's kinda what we've done, we've upgraded a lot of things, but stuff on the back end is still old school, so it is screaming, running wild. Um, he's working on some solutions. Um, I just, I appreciate Brevin for, nobody knows the hours the guy puts in. Um, and got a pregnant wife at home, I'm surprised him and Anthony are gonna have to go rent a place together and keep getting in trouble like this, so just appreciate all you've done. And everybody screams when technology doesn't work, because our lives are tied to it now and it's not for him and his team of trying, so. I do have one other thing, um, we have made significant progress. I would strongly urge each of you to stop in to R E S, Dr. Shaffer and Mrs. Myers would love to let you go in and look. Uh, drywall is hung, we are mudding right now. December, Christmas break is when the front office phase one will be complete. We had a two-hour meeting today picking out furniture, it's like watching paint dry, but it's very important and just to walk in and see the freshness and the change of what we have is very refreshing, so. I, I strongly encourage you, everybody's time is valuable, I mean, we could go over tonight if you want to, I don't have a problem. Um, but I know everybody's time is valuable, but if you're just in town, wanna stop in there and take a look, uh, give me a call, give Grant a call or schools in session to stop in, they'd love to show it off, the work, the progress that's been done so far, so it's nice.
Mr. Mr. Jameson, anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Peters?
Fire, F F A, foundations and reaching excellence.
Thank you, sir.
You feel completely.
I feel completely.
There you go.
Board members, anything else? Hearing none, all entertain a motions adjourned?
So moved.
Thank you for coming, appreciate your diligence, thank you.